Good evening. Thank you for joining us this evening. We'll call to order this meeting of the City Council of the City of Gehanna for Monday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. If you would please join me to stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance delivered by Council Vice President Trenton Weaver.
Thank you. As we gather today, may we approach our work with patience and clarity. In the midst of uncertainty, may we also find hope in our shared commitment to moving our community forward. And may our decisions reflect both resilience and a belief in the opportunities that lie ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Van Meter, would you please call the roll?
Bowers.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
McGregor.
Here.
Padova.
Here.
Renner.
Here.
Schnitzer.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Van Meter. We do have one addition, correction to the agenda this evening. Ordinance zero zero five two dash two thousand and twenty-five is withdrawn from the agenda per the request of the administration, and we do expect to see it back later this year. Are there any other additions or corrections to this evening's agenda? All right, we do have one item under presentations this evening, a swearing-in ceremony from the Division of Police. Mayor Jadwin?
Thank you very much. Council, as you know, we have been working very diligently to add to our tremendously talented communications technicians staff, and we are thrilled tonight to be swearing in Michaela Fulham. Michaela has been going through our training program here, and she's been a wonderful addition. We also have several, actually, most of our team. Will you guys just stand up for a minute, our communications technician staff, because nobody ever gets to see you guys? These are the people, because we have a full room tonight. When you call for an emergency and you are in your worst moments, these are the people that you hear on the other end of the phone. It's not all of them, but it's a good portion of them. And they're the folks who take care of you and get you the help that you need as fast as we can possibly get it to you. So just, you should get to know them and say hi to them sometime before you leave tonight. Thank you, ladies. So I'm going to invite Director Becker and Chief Spence down to the podium, and Michaela, if you'd like to join us as well. All right, if you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States of America, the Constitution and statutes of the state of Ohio, and the charter and ordinances of the city of Gehanna, and that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge the duties of police communications technician for the Gehanna Division of Police to which I have been appointed. So help me God. Congratulations.
So in my first few years here, we hired a lot of communications technicians, and we struggled to get them to this point. And I want to give credit to the radio room staff. They've worked really hard to revamp the training, and the leadership over there has found a new path guiding people to success. And now, for the second time in just four months, we've had Connie and Michaela successfully complete our program. So Michaela is a wonderful young lady. She's going to be a shining light for Gehanna for many years to come. Very thankful to have her, very thankful to all the trainees. And again, when you call for an emergency or a non-emergency, you need the police, these ladies often will never be seen, but they're there answering the call twenty-four seven. And these officers, and I've been on the other end of the radio, they're hoping that they send them on a good call. But they're also, when they need backup, that's their lifeline to get them the assistance they need. So very crucial role. We're very grateful for them and very excited for Michaela. Thank you.
Yeah, just echoing what the director said, but you know, the, the performance over there has been exceptional. Angie and her entire team, you know, when somebody picks up the phone in Gehanna, I think we underestimate the fact that from, from tip to ring, from the time you pick up that phone, hit that last digit, to the time it's picked up by one of these professional staff is, on average, two seconds. You know, if you, if you travel a short mile down the roadway, you might get a busy signal. So their, their performance, the metrics, the number of calls that they're handling with speed, efficiency, and professionalism is unmatched in the area. And we're lucky to have people like Michaela taking, taking over the reins and joining the team up there. So thank you.
Congratulations to Ms. Fulham, and welcome to the City of Gehanna. Next item on this evening's agenda is the hearing of visitors. I do have one speaker slip this evening. We'll give a moment for those who are here for the swearing in.
I did caution them it was a long meeting and they could leave.
That's fair. All right, we'll start with the first speaker slip. This evening is from Patricia Kovacs. Ms. Kovacs, if you could please approach the podium, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes for your remarks.
Thank you, Council. My name's Patricia Kovacs. I live at five two seven Haversham Drive, which is near Middle School East. I want to thank the city for updating the, I'm talking here about the Creekside Plan. Thank you for adding that we would get a six month warning if the Bauer house is going to be demolished. And I did hear from the previous owner that the building is not considered, he doesn't consider the building blighted. But I'm here to talk about my concerns on the finances of this project. I've already spoken at a previous meeting that I was concerned that we paid off the five million dollar loan that the CIC took out subsequently. But I thought, well, maybe we'll get some of that money back from the developer. But I heard that we're basically giving the land to the developer if, if it goes through. After the meeting, Marissa called together some residents to ask for it and put on the project, and I appreciate that as well. And she shared a study, a strategic plan that was done in two thousand and twenty-two. I don't think I'd ever seen that before, but it showed like plans for townhomes on High between Walnut and Creek, carpenter on Carpenter between High and Shepherd, and multifamily homes on Granville Street. And I just feel like that's going to kind of totally redo our whole city. The plan also referred to Miller and Granville as placeless. And I thought that was kind of insulting to refer to our city as placeless. So I'm wondering, did the public review that plan? I try to keep track of all the different committees, and I don't remember seeing that plan shared with the public. Subsequent to our meeting, I was chastised by someone that I didn't know what the CIC did. And I'm used to being chastised. I have different opinions than people a lot. But I was on the Citizens Academy, and I don't remember ever talking about the CIC. I know that they tried to encourage development of businesses either to move or to build in Gehanna, but I didn't know they were allowed to purchase property. Anyway, one, one thing I would suggest is that should be discussed at the next Citizens Academy, what the CIC actually does. When I was concerned that they are allowed to buy property without no one who's going to develop it, I was told it's done by everybody, or everybody does it. But we all had mothers and dads that said, if everyone jumps off the cliff, you're not going to jump off the cliff. So. And I do want to say that I think it's hard that, I feel like a lot of the CIC activity is done behind the curtain. That's all I had to share. I don't know if I meant to change anyone's opinion, but the finances of this project were bothering me, and I felt like I had to say what I felt. Thanks.
Thank you. Our second speaker slip this evening is from Greg Bixler. Mr. Bixler, if you'd please approach the podium, state your name and address, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Good evening. Greg Bixler, one thirty-three Wall Creek Drive East. I live there with my wife and three kids, and my three kids go to Gehanna Public Schools. I get to run a business in Gehanna, and I worship in Gehanna. But I'm here tonight to talk about a growing problem in our community that impacts home values and the mental safety and health of our children. And what I'm talking about is excessive and inappropriate holiday displays. Some displays are merely annoying, like specifically those Christmas lights that you can see from outer space. But others are distasteful, dark, and even gruesome. Halloween displays in some homes in Gehanna have crossed the line, going from G-rated Jack Lannarins and Casper the Ghost to R-rated realistic bloody and even demonic life-size displays. I was talking recently to a friend and Gehanna resident who described a realistic life-size skeleton holding a skinned human with intestines coming out. He was horrified, horrified, as his four-year-old daughter accidentally came upon this home during beggars' night. Unfortunately, some of our neighbors don't have our children's mental health or property values in mind when they create these displays in their front yards. A Google search and an AI overview confirms that realtors across the country agree controversial displays like the ones I'm describing negatively impact home values. Surprisingly, there aren't regulations on such displays. We have regulations on how tall our grass can be, or if I could park my boat in my front yard. But now is the time to take action and update these regulations. The trend of this inappropriate front yard displays is growing, as evidenced by the number of homes that you see participating year after year. Let's not wait until this gets completely out of control. Let's not allow a few people to ruin it for everyone. This is where regulations are needed for a healthy community. So I'm asking the City Council to please consider three specific actions. Number one, limit the amount of time that holiday displays can be up. You know, this can be from the inflatable Santa Claus to the skeleton. Number two, stop holiday display competitions in Gehanna. This is only making the problem worse. Number three, help bring back G or even PG-rated neighborhoods for our children. We need regulations on what's appropriate to display. Please help stop the R-rated displays in our front yards that our children can't help but to see. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other speaker slips this evening? All right. We will move on to our public hearing this evening. We have one item open for public hearing this evening. And pursuant to council rules, we will be discussing ordinance forty-nine dash two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance adopting appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Gehanna during fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six. We would refer, instead of a formal presentation from the administration, refer to finance committee meetings that have been held over the last several weeks, and the proposed two thousand and twenty-six budget that has been posted with the agendas. If there are any speakers to speak at this evening's public hearing, please complete a speaker slip and come forward to the podium. You'll have three minutes to provide your comments. And seeing that I have received no speaker slips regarding this public hearing, we will close this evening's public hearing with a note that there will be a second public hearing on this item in two weeks at the December first meeting, with the budget anticipated for adoption on December fifteenth. All right, next item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda, section F. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
Is there movement?
I have a first by Mr. Schnitzer.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Renner. Is there any discussion? Mr. Van Meter, would you please call the roll?
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes. Motion carries and the consent agenda is adopted as published. Section G, ordinances for introduction and first reading. Mr. Van Meter, would you please read ordinance fifty-one into the record?
Ordinance zero zero five one dash two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance to establish utility rates and amend related provisions of Part Nine, Title Three, Public Utilities of the Gehanna Codified Ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Van Meter. Section H this evening, ordinances for second reading and adoption. We have one item that I think many people are here to discuss or here, or participate in this process. Ordinance forty-two dash two thousand and twenty-five. We'll start with Mr. Van Meter providing the second reading. We'll then move to a presentation by the administration related to this item, and then we will entertain motions and necessary amendments and discussion. Mr. Van Meter, would you please read ordinance forty-two dash two thousand and twenty-five?
Ordinance zero zero four two dash two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a development agreement with Connect Realty LLC, Benson Capital LLC, and the Gehanna Community Improvement Corporation for the redevelopment of vacant and blighted properties in the Creekside District.
Thank you, Mr. Van Meter. With that, I will turn this over to a presentation from the administration. Mayor Jadwin?
Thank you, Councilmember Bowers. So the development agreement for a mixed-use project that is currently pending before council tonight for a vote was presented two months ago, September twenty-second. Over the last eight weeks, we have had multiple engagements with the community to discuss and receive feedback on this project. Those include a community conversation that was held September twenty-fourth, the Creekside Conference and Event Center. We held focus group meetings with Creekside-specific residents and businesses. We had meetings with residents, groups of residents, community organizations, one-on-one conversations with residents and business owners. I know many of you council members have had those as well. We've had, received email communications. We've had seven weeks of public discussions right here in these chambers on this project as well, and held a public hearing on this project to give people an opportunity to provide input and feedback. We set up an email to receive questions so that people can share, excuse me, their questions and concerns, gathered those, and then presented them in the form of FAQs on a webpage, creeksidereimagined.com, that we created, that has links to pretty much every piece of information that we have available on this project. But to be fair, work on this project didn't begin eight weeks ago. Work on this project began years ago. In the initial years after the Creekside development, as we know it today, first opened in two thousand and seven, our community, our residents and our businesses, began to voice their concerns over the Creekside District, expressing their desire to see it become more vibrant, more vital, teeming with, with people and with businesses. There was a survey done with the city back in two thousand and nine, just two years after the Creekside development opened, seeking community feedback on what did Creekside need, how to best market Creekside, what types of businesses should be recruited for that area. The old Gehanna Vision Plan was done a few years after that, followed by the Land Use Plan that was done in two thousand and nineteen. These are just a few of the plans, but every single one of them involved community input, soliciting, incorporating, and basing a plan on feedback from the community as to what they wanted to see in that area. For more than a decade, we've been talking with economic development experts, experts in placemaking, experts in the private development community, business owners, and of course, most importantly, our residents, to understand what is truly needed in that area to make the Creekside District successful. Those plans I just mentioned and more were fed into the Creekside Redevelopment Strategy that was, began in May or June of twenty-one, concluded in May of twenty-two, when we unveiled it for the first time at Herb Day. It was a cold rainy day, over held by the pool, but I remember being in the tent with big posters showing what the redevelopment strategy It was a cold rainy day, over held by the pool, but I remember being in the tent with big posters showing what the redevelopment strategy showed. We held a town hall meeting on the redevelopment strategy right here in chambers, and that meeting was, I believe it was streamed, livestreamed. It's been posted on our city's YouTube page, and it's actually, there's a link to it on the creeksidereimagined.com webpage that I just referenced. We had residents provide their feedback at that time, and we've been receiving feedback in a variety of forms ever since that time. This proposed agreement, the proposed project we're talking about tonight, is exactly what was outlined in that Creekside Redevelopment Strategy more than three years ago. Again, a strategy that was informed by Gehenna residents, by Gehenna businesses, and by the private development community. Because as we've talked about before, if the private development community doesn't see the value and the willingness to invest in a project, it doesn't really matter what we want to have built there. There has to be a marriage and a blending of both what the private development community is willing and finds value in investing and what the community wants to see. So I truly believe that this project is a blending of both of those. Is it perfect? I don't think we'd ever find a perfect project, but I do believe it is what Creekside needs to truly make it the vibrant, vital area that we want, that our community members have told us that, and that was reaffirmed in our strategic plan adopted just two weeks ago today. This strategic plan, economic development strategy, has its own chapter on Creekside because Creekside was the most talked-about topic from our residents during the one-year process that we went through in terms of their priorities of what they wanted Gehenna to be in the next five to 10 years. So this agreement, and this is a collaborative effort between the city, our Gehenna Community Improvement Corporation, CIC, whose job is to go out and purchase property and act as a land bank by a HARRY BIS code, our city council, and our community. And now I'd like to actually turn this over to Director Gocke to talk about, make some final statements on this project specifically.
Good evening, council. It's my pleasure to be here again, talking about this project tonight. And it's okay to be nervous up there. I remember the days when I was on council, and I think when I first started here six or seven months ago, I said, "I don't envy you for this reason. These are hard decisions to make." This is another defining project for Creekside, but you can take comfort in the shared work that crafted the vision and got us this far, and the shared burden of seeing it through and delivering it for the people of Gehenna. You can't see it, but I'm wearing my pigs-flying socks tonight to reflect the hope and a little disbelief that we are actually this far and this close. Over the past two months, we've discussed, debated, analyzed, questioned the data, the developers, the demand, and the deal points of this proposed project. Really, this project stretches back years to which the mayor just detailed very well. This project was not considered lightly or in a vacuum. It was informed by public sentiment, data-driven market demand. Time and again, the people have expressed their love for Creekside and their desire to see it be something better, something that they can continue to be proud of. The need for the project is clear. Vacant and dilapidated buildings still plague Main Street. Public and market demand has shown a desire for vibrancy in the Creekside District. In the last few months, we've discussed how that happens. This project has some of those aspects, but not all necessarily. We've talked about there is no silver bullet, but downtown development never ends, and you're always sort of eating the elephant, right? It's one bite at a time. So I'll briefly review those quickly. So number one, this project brings more people downtown. Currently, 1,797 people are present in the district daily, either working or living. A lot of contrast has been made, or comparison has been made, to Bridge Park in Dublin. In fact, I was talking to my Dublin Economic Development Friends recently, and they said, Gehenna's the original Bridge Park. That's right. Don't you forget it. Contrast that with Dublin's 2,313 people just in their mixed-use area alone, a difference of about 500 people. A mix of housing also adds to the diversity of district residents. Apartments, townhouses, and detached, single-family homes all appeal to a broad cross-section of the population. This project adds to that diversity of housing and brings more residents living and visitors visiting downtown. This project brings more spending in the district. We talked about this when we looked at the fiscal impact analysis. Using projected rents as a determiner of income, the average household will have around $22,800 in disposable income, likely to spend a good portion of that in the district. Across the 287 households times 22,800, it would be about $6.5 million in new available income that could be spent across the district. This does not take into account hotel guest spending. Strong connectivity, strong, safe, comfortable transit, which includes parking, should be available to encourage pedestrians, visitors, and motorists to seek a meal, entertainment, or recreation in the district. To return to the Bridge Park example, immediately east of that development, there are an additional 900 residential units within a 10-minute walk without crossing a four-lane road. For reference, it's about a 10-minute walk from Carpenter Road to Granville Street. So within Dublin, adjacent to Bridge Park is an extra 900 residential units just within the Creekside District. We, however, are limited because of the creek, Granville Street, Schall Park, and the elementary school, and walkability is limited, and thus necessitates the need to build up. Proper downtown development encourages a proper mix of businesses, a mix of properly-placed destination, lifestyle, visitor, targeted, and experiential businesses is necessary to create vibrancy across diverse residents and visitors throughout the day and evening. While this project adds little in terms of new square commercial footage, other than restaurant space, it does provide a catalyst for spending, which will then encourage business and retail development. And rest assured, it would be a priority of the Economic Development Department to seek new retail opportunities that fit the demands of this community. We don't stop here. Downtown development, development itself, never ends. And finally, strong public places, as evidenced with the companion project, potential companion project in the plaza. Events, gathering spaces, and recreation areas all add to civic pride, community interaction, and encourage residents, families, and visitors alike to interact with each other, linger, take a walk, and hopefully shop. What you are considering is, of course, a vision for a new development, but it is more than a few buildings. It is an opportunity to strengthen our economy and our community. Creekside is the crown jewel of Gehenna. This proposal continues that legacy by bringing new energy, new residents, businesses, visitors, and new activity to the district. It aligns directly with our strategic goals, responds to market demand, and positions us for long-term growth. Approving this project signals that Gehenna is ready to compete, ready to invest in its future, and ready to create the kind of vibrant, connected places that residents, visitors, and businesses are seeking. The economic benefits, the expanded tax base, the increased foot traffic, and the rejuvenated civic pride will support our local businesses and strengthen Creekside as a destination for locals and regional visitors alike. Most importantly, and finally, this development reflects who we are becoming, an innovative, welcoming, and forward-looking community that builds on our past while making room for new opportunities. On behalf of the Economic Development Department, we thank you for your diligence in considering this, respectfully ask for your approval of the proposed development, and look forward to working with you throughout the next several steps over the next several years. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Gocke. I believe the administration presentation is then concluded, so we will move on. We have a couple of procedural matters to address. I'll walk through this and then entertain some motions. So first, we'll need to take a first and a second to adopt Ordinance 42-2025. Before we discuss, I would recommend that we do a first amendment, a move to amend to substitute Exhibit A, as noted on the agenda. There is also, so we'll take a first and a second, and then a roll call on that amendment first. I would then recommend that we proceed with a second recommended amendment, which is ordinance language corrections to the ordinance as recommended by the city attorney. There are red lines at each space, and having been emailed to members, and we'll read that when we entertain that motion. And then, roll call on that motion to amend, and then we'll proceed with then a discussion on the underlying amendment, okay? Or the underlying amended ordinance, all right? All right. Well, first, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance 42-2025.
So moved, Madam President.
I have a first by Mr. Schnitzer.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Renner. By way of discussion, I would suggest that we then move forward with the first recommended amendment to adopt substitute Exhibit A, which is identified in Legistar as Item 19, Final Proposed Substitute Exhibit A, City of Gehenna Connect Real Estate Gehenna CIC Development Agreement, Connect Review 19689939.251. Is there a motion to amend as stated?
So moved.
I have a first by Mr. Weaver and a second by Mr. Renner. Any discussion on this amendment? All right. Mr. Van Meter, would you please call the roll?
Weaver?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Motion carries, and the ordinance is amended as previously stated.
Amended.
Excuse me. Amended as previously stated. Thank you. The next amendment is to amend the ordinance language as provided in the red line document. The first amendment would be to correct the title, striking the word Gehenna in front of Community Improvement Corporation, and instead replacing it with Community Improvement Corporation of Gehenna. The similar correction will be made in the first whereas clause and in the fifth whereas And the final amendment being in Section 1 of the ordinance, to add in the language inclusive of its sub-exhibits, together with any amendments or revisions as approved by the city attorney, and then the same correction to the name of the Community Improvement Corporation. Is there a first to amend the ordinance as stated in the proposed amendment?
So moved.
A first by Mr. Renner?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Weaver? Any discussion on this amendment? Hearing none. Mr. Van Meter, would you please call the roll?
Renner?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries, and the ordinance is amended as stated. All right. Back to the underlying ordinance. We will open it up for discussion from my colleagues. Who would like to share thoughts? Mrs. McGregor?
On the ordinance, correct?
On the ordinance, yes.
Okay. I'll just repeat what I have said before. I know my main concern is the parking lot next to the sanctuary. Years ago, probably late '90s, 1990s, the city had many complaints about parking in Old Gehenna, and the city addressed those by purchasing two homes on two properties and demolishing the buildings, and that provided needed parking for the last 25 years for nearby businesses, people visiting events, and particularly in this class of the sanctuary have used that lot extensively. And I appreciate Phase 1 provides parking for the apartments, and it's a self-parked project. It provides parking for the apartments, the hotels, and the businesses located in the new buildings. But Phase 2 is what I guess I object to. It takes away the vital parking area that Gehenna residents rely on. No viable placements have been provided. I know we had a study that there are 600 in some parking spaces in Old Gehenna, but many of those are on private lots, and I don't see much movement on providing the parking to replace that lot. The development seems to provide parking for new residents, but it's taken away parking from all the rest of Gehenna. And for that reason, I cannot support Phase 2 because of this lot, and because of the laws of this lot and the Harry Bauer homes. So since we can't separate them, I won't be supporting the ordinance.
Thank you, Mrs. McGregor. Mrs. Padova?
Thank you. So if this vote had been placed in front of me three years ago, just after being sworn into office, I probably would have voted no. Back then, the idea of giving away land would have been a nonstarter for me. Like many residents, I would have insisted that the developer pay for it outright. And like many residents, the amount of public subsidies that goes to private development still gives me pause. I voted against abatements that have offered limited public benefit, and I've challenged our administration to rethink how we can approach these tools. I still hope over time that we can move toward a different model. But when it comes to Creekside, time is something that we do not have. We know that visits are down in that area. We know that time spent there is declining, and if we do nothing, the situation will likely worsen. If we simply sell the land to the highest bidder, we surrender any meaningful control over what gets built and how that shapes our downtown, and that understandably scares people. Residents are being asked to place a great deal of trust in us, and I know that that is a big ask. Many of the people I've spoken with have said that they don't know what the answer is, but they're not sure that this is it, and I hear them. I've wrestled with this myself. But for the last four years, I've tried to understand Creekside from every angle that I could. I've attended every luncheon, conference, summit, workshop, speaker series that I could, with Creekside always being top of mind. And again and again, the messages from experts in economic development, city planners, tourism professionals, developers, was all consistent. It all echoed exactly what Director Gocke, Mayor Jadwin, Mr. Benson, Mr. Lamb, and others have shared with us throughout this whole process. So I want to acknowledge their hard work, and what we're doing here isn't, it's not simple, it's not quick. It's certainly not easy, and it has taken years of negotiation, education, listening, compromise to get to this point. But based on everything that I've learned and everything we've been presented, I'm confident that this agreement represents the best path forward for our Creekside District, given the current reality that we are in. I wish that I could wave a magic wand and undo some of the things that were done 20 years ago. I wish that I had a crystal ball to guarantee that this will work, but we don't have that. So tonight, we have to make our decisions based on the information that we have today, knowing full well that no outcome is going to please everyone in our community. No matter how this goes, some residents will be excited, others will be disappointed. But I genuinely believe that if this project is completed, it will be, we will be in a significantly better position than we are today, and I believe that Creekside can become the thriving district that many of us want it to be so badly. President Bowers said something a few months ago that stuck with me, that hope isn't warm or comforting. It's uncomfortable, it's anxiety, it's scary. But even with that, I remain hopeful, not naive or reckless, but just hopeful that this project will move us in the right direction. So tonight, I will be voting yes on this agreement, and I encourage my colleagues to join me, not in voting for guarantees, because there are none, but in voting for hope rather than fear of what might be. So thank you all for your work on this.
Thank you, Mrs. Padova. Mr. Chairperson?
Thank you, Madam President. I guess I just want to start by saying there's no perfect project, as we heard from the mayor. There's no perfect project that all 36,000 residents can agree on, such as the nature of personal opinions and taste. And if we start there, we're left with a spectrum broadly consisting of good projects and bad projects. I believe this project falls into the former category for a handful of reasons. First, this project is an undertaking by a private developer, securing private capital, acting in response to what the market will support. The estimated capital investment is $100 million, with the city contributing roughly 5% in the form of a handful of parcels. This project will quadruple the number of housing This project will quadruple the number of housing units in the area to support local businesses, including restaurants, shops and gyms. This project is mixed use, something that we've heard from the community is important to them. It'll bring residential restaurants, a cohatch and, and a hotel. This project is self-park. The project includes practically no contingent liabilities of the city. And the manufactured nature of this project translates to shorter construction time and that's less disruptive to the area. Which brings me to this vote, which is approving a development agreement. Such is the nature of votes, they're binary. It's yes or it's no. Yes, to take the next steps or no, to basically pump the brakes and, and I guess pivot in another direction. To say no is tantamount to maintaining the status quo, which I've heard overwhelmingly in this community. Election cycle after election cycle is not acceptable to them. To say no suggests that there's an economically viable plan B. The data and our experiences would point to that just not being the case. So for all of these reasons, I will support taking the next steps to advance a good project, even if it's not a perfect project. That's all from me.
Thank you, Mr. Schnitzer. Mrs. Jones and then Mr. Renner. Thank you. So I also want to acknowledge that this proposal doesn't check every box for every single resident. I feel really confident that I've personally, and I know colleagues in the administration, have spent months engaging deeply with our community. We've done that formally, informally, phone, email, and I have even spent hours reading through nearly every comment on social media, sometimes at the detriment to my mental health, but it is a way to hear from the people and I have read them all, right up until right before we walked in today. At the same time, I want to acknowledge that I think what we all agree on is that we want more for Creekside. We want more for this part of our community. And while there are very real concerns that many have raised from traffic to parking to scale of the development, we know that these issues matter and that they have to continue to shape our next steps. Growth in Creekside, it has to work with our community, with our infrastructure and not against it. What we continue to hear though, and I have come to understand that drawing on nearly two decades in retail, no store wants to go into an empty mall, no business wants to come into an empty Creekside. And the kind of businesses that can truly sustain the area simply will not come if Creekside remains what it is today. Do I think what's been proposed is an absolute fix for Creekside? No, and I know that our residents don't as well. And I'm also not someone who blindly subscribes to build it and they will come. However, what I can say with confidence is that I have appreciated the thoughtful approach, integrity, flexibility and what seems like a truly sincere commitment to our community that Benson Capital and Connect has shown. I have appreciated the work of the administration and all of our residents for showing up to share their feedback as well. As my colleague Schnitzer said, Michael Schnitzer said, this is another step in a very long journey that has already happened before what everybody sees today. We know that there are still other steps, planning and all of that still has to happen. And so as the work continues, just know that my support is not unconditional, but we are here today to vote on, do we do business or not? And I think if we don't want to be left with what we have today, which we all agree that we don't, that we have to move forward with the decision that we have today and work towards a Creekside that we can all be proud of, which is why I will also be supporting this today as well. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Mr. Renner?
Tonight, we are voting on a developer agreement for the Creekside Mill Street area. This is one of the most important decisions we'll make for the future of Gehanna and I want to be, I want to speak clearly on why I support moving forward. First, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the passion behind this conversation. The people, the people of Gehanna, you have really short, shown up, you've spoken to us in multiple different ways. And to me, the people love Gehanna and that's a strength. And big projects can naturally raise big concerns. But our responsibility is look closely at the facts and at what works in other central Ohio communities and at the protections that this agreement provides. I have been in Gehanna almost twenty-six years. And I have, I was here before Creekside was a thing. I wasn't here on council, but I was here at the public meetings. I was here at the charrettes. I was here at the, and listening to the voices of our community many years ago. Creekside and the Mill Street area was always supposed to be developed on both sides. The expectation by our residents at that time and in today is that they are expecting a downtown area that is vibrant and that it protects our businesses. So at the core of this agreement, it's about creating a vibrant, connected and economically strong Creekside district. It includes milestones, reporting requirements, performance expectations and safeguards for the city, including a reversion of land if financing or progress fails. It positions Gehanna to finally achieve the potential we envisioned long ago when we envisioned Creekside was first built. I believe this project has the potential to strengthen our tax base, support our local businesses and elevating our downtown experience as well as securing long-term value for our community. And I believe the developer agreement gives us the accountability and the oversight to ensure it is built responsibly. I strongly respect differing viewpoints. And I will continue to listen to our residents and to even the West Side, my bosses, as we move forward. But after reviewing the facts, the regional context and remember, Gehanna is not in a vacuum, we're not an island, we are part of a central Ohio region. The financial safeguards and the years of planning behind this moment, I am confident that this is the right step for Gehanna. I will be respectfully supporting the approval of the developer agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Renner. Mr. Weaver?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to express my gratitude to everyone who has taken the time to send a message, connect with us at a public event, stopped, stopped at the grocery store, called or reached out about this generally. I firmly believe that public participation has helped make this proposal a better one. I also want to level set and be clear about what it is that we are considering tonight. We, we've had a lot of conversation over the last several months involving public improvements as well as private investment. This is, under consideration this evening is the private development agreement. There will be further conversations in the future involving public improvements, but this is, we are considering a development agreement this evening. And along with that agreement, as, as Mr. Renner alluded to, there are additional steps in the process to come. I may be the youngest member of council on the dais, but like Mr. Renner, I do remember the four times, the before times when, when there was no development really along Creekside. And like Mr. Renner, I wasn't on council at the time, I was a child, but I do remember. And over the years, proposals have come and gone. And as was stated by Director Gocke in his presentation, there is no, there has been no silver bullet proposal and I don't believe that there is one that exists. And much of the difficulty in making strides or general improvements at Creekside has been the inability to package a sufficient number of parcels together for a developer to take interest. Thanks to the efforts of the Gehanna Community Improvement Corporation, they did just that on behalf of the city. I know I served as a trustee for several years to the CIC, Mr. Renner, Ms. Padova, as part of that process as well. We have several CIC members here this evening, thank you for being here. That packaging has led to a greater interest in, in any potential proposal. And so while not a silver bullet, I, I do believe that the current proposal has the potential to be a catalytic, catalytic project for the city and for the community. We know there is a need for additional feet on the ground. There's a need for additional housing of all varieties in central Ohio and our corner of Franklin County is not an exception to that. We've heard time and time again that retail follows rooftops and I do believe that additional housing will help spur additional retail investments. As it relates to this particular project, yes, it is a large number of units that we're talking about. But I do appreciate the self-contained parking, the additional restaurants I believe will be a benefit, the additional investment in our trails and actual recreation of the area will be a net positive for the community. I'm excited by the opportunity for a boutique hotel in the district as the city does receive calls from the airport or for conferences about this being a need that regularly arises. I do want to share my appreciation to Benson Capital and Connect Realty for their efforts in outreach to the community surrounding neighbors and properties, as well as Director Gocke and the administration's efforts on that as well. A smaller item, I do appreciate the developer's commitment to public art and I encourage them to work with the Arts Council and other community partners on that. I do have ongoing concerns about the potential traffic impacts, but I appreciate the developer and the city's willingness to work with ODOT and surrounding businesses to lessen that impact. And I'll just say, Connect has a history in this regard of reduced construction timelines that I think will be a plus for the project as a whole. So all that said, again, I want to thank everyone for their efforts and for their participation along the way. I, I do plan to vote in support of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. And thank you to all of my colleagues for your thoughtful and well-considered comments this evening. So similarly, I have some thoughts and comments to share as well. So as you all know, over the past many months and truly over the past several years, this project has been shaped by countless voices and substantial public engagement, as the mayor referenced at the outset of this ordinance. We have come a very long way, from earlier proposed projects that came to us for vote a few years ago, through the Creekside redevelopment strategy of twenty-twenty-two and through a productive and focused process of the strategic plan which culminated in adoption earlier this month. I very much want to acknowledge all the residents and interested parties who participated in formal public hearings, who shared thoughtful comments on the record, who attended small group conversations and engagement events hosted throughout the city and who engaged on social media and one-on-one conversations. Like Ms. Jones, I have listened to much of it and recognized the very real concerns of traffic, parking and loss of character, but also the very real hope that our community has and we're sharing together. These perspectives, combined with the vetting council as a whole and individually has been involved with, the years of work by the administration and the efforts of the Gehanna Community Improvement Corporation have informed my decision tonight to support this project. More specifically, I also want to thank Director Gocke for providing data, justification and additional information over the last several weeks. And I want to specifically point out and reference the comparable regional project chart that was shared at the September twenty-second meeting, that identifies comparable projects throughout the region where contributions of public dollars are made in support of significant development projects. I also want to appreciate the fiscal impact analysis. I think that may have been the very first that the city has seen, or at least in recent years, and so I congratulate Director Gocke on rising to the request of that. I also want to specifically thank city attorney Tammy Larison for ensuring with a fine-toothed comb that the development agreement really codified all the, all of the concerns and the expectations as best as possible and ensured that there was alignment as best as possible with all the parties involved. So thank you so much for your work on that. I'm genuinely optimistic about what this project offers. As we've heard tonight, in, in the addition of housing and hotel will fill critical needs in the Creekside district. They will support not only our public events and local businesses, but also the broader economic ecosystem, including an existing event center that hosts more than one hundred weddings and special events every year and a thriving visit Gehanna Tourism Board. I'm optimistic based on the projects that are already developed by Connect and its leadership in the quality, longevity and sustainability of this development team's work and I value their proven commitment, both to historic preservation and innovative construction methods. I want to especially thank Frank Benson, whose vision, optimism and personal connections to this area through, shine through his commitment to get this project over the finish line. This, I think specifically through Mr. Lamb and Mr. Benson's work far exceeds projects that have been put in front of us with regard to redevelopment in the Creekside district and I am proud to see what this does for our region. I also have confidence in our planning and design processes, confidence in the director of planning and in our planning commission, whose expertise will ensure that the finished project, product reflects the scale, character and quality our community expects. This includes wayfinding, parking and height, which may be outside of the scope of planning commission, but which I know will be worked on by the administration going forward. That said, I do want to take a moment outside of the planning process to reiterate my strong encouragement of the development team to ensure that the phase town, phase two town homes are owner occupied. Homeownership within the district is a vital component of long-term stability and a key part of meeting regional housing needs and so I ask respectfully for your continued pursuit of ensuring that for our community. This ordinance represents a major step forward in investing in, reimagining and advancing Gehanna at a pivotal time. As our region grows, now the thirteenth or fourteenth largest in the nation, depending on who you listen to, we must position ourselves thoughtfully for the future and Creekside reimagined is a meaningful part of that work. And for all of these reasons, I will be proud to vote yes on ordinance forty-two. Thank you. Mr. Van Meter, I think that concludes discussion. Would you please call the roll?
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
McGregor?
No.
Padova?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries and ordinance forty-two dash twenty-two-five is adopted. Section I of this evening's agenda, ordinances for introduction, waiver and adoption, this item has been withdrawn and will be brought back in front of council before the end of the year. Section J, ordinances for introduction, waiver and emergency adoption. Mr. Van Meter, would you please read ordinance fifty into the record?
Ordinance zero-zero-five-zero dash twenty-two-five, an ordinance to accept an easement and right-of-way agreement from Ohio Power Company, successor and interest to Columbus and Southern Ohio Electric Company for fiber optic installation serving eight-twenty-five Tech Center Drive, waiving second reading and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Van Meter. Is there a motion to suspend council rules and waive the second reading of ordinance fifty dash twenty-two-five?
So moved.
I have a first by Mr. Renner.
Second.
And a second by Ms. Jones. Any discussion on the motion to suspend rules and waive second reading on this item? Hearing none, Mr. Van Meter, would you please call the roll?
Renner?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Motion carries and rules are suspended, waiving second reading of this ordinance. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance fifty dash twenty-two-five?
So moved.
I have a first by Ms. Jones. And a second by Mr. Renner. Any discussion regarding this item? Hearing none, Mr. Van Meter, would you please call the roll?
Jones?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Motion carries and the emergency is also granted. Section K, correspondence and actions, Mr.
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Motion carries, and the emergency is also granted. Section K, correspondence and actions. Mr. Van Meter, do you have anything for us this evening?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Van Meter. Council members, any correspondence or actions this evening? All right, hearing none. Section L, representatives, CIC, Mr. Renner and Ms. Padova.
We do have a meeting tomorrow morning at 8:00 in the committee rooms. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Renner. Ms. Padova?
I do want to add that the CIC meetings are open to the public. We may go into executive session, but those are always open to the public.
Thank you, Ms. Padova. Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, Mr. Weaver.
Thank you, Madam President. As always, thank you to council office for their assistance in the preparation of the report. The commission met on last Thursday, November 13. The next meeting will be on December 11. At the commission meeting, the commission did approve the Village of Baltimore as a new member and adopted a mid-year revision to the 2025 operating budget, reduced from about $30 million down to about $24.5 million. This is due in large part to federal cuts to, or cuts to federal funding, grant funding. The commission also approved amendments to the state fiscal years 2026 through 2029 Transportation Improvement Program and Planning Work Program. And the commission also authorized an application for a $200,000 Ohio Department of Transportation grant to support regional mobility planning efforts. In terms of legislative highlights, I would encourage folks to take a look at the linked legislative summary. But as folks may have seen, state lawmakers have reached an agreement on new congressional maps, and deliberations do continue on several property tax measures at the State House. At the federal level, lawmakers did approve a deal to end the nation's longest government shutdown. Lastly, I do want to flag February 10, 2026 will be Data Day. I believe, President Bowers, you attended this year's Data Day and found it to be very informative. So mark your calendars for that. There is a link to register and learn more. And that will be it for my report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Convention and Visitors Bureau, Councilwoman Padova.
Thank you. This Sunday, November 23, from 3:00 to 6:30 is the Holiday Light Celebration. I can't believe that we are already to that point of the year, but it's always a good time. There will be ice sculpting show, trackless train rides, and live music and dancing, and lots of different things going on at the Creekside District. So November 23, Creekside District, from 3:00 to 6:30, and we are looking for a few more volunteers. So if you want to go to Visit Gehanna, you can check out the opportunities to volunteer for that. If you aren't able to make it to that one to volunteer, but still want to volunteer for something, you can also volunteer for the Santa Race. That is sold out, but there are still some volunteer slots available. So again, you can go to Visit Gehanna for more information on that. Visit Gehanna will also be hosting the Santa Hotline this year, beginning on December 1, which, don't sleep on that one, because I didn't realize how excited a toddler would get over hearing Santa, but we called quite a few times last year and brought a lot of joy to our holiday season. So again, you can go to Visit Gehanna to get that number once it is available. They will also be hosting a contest with the Columbus Dispatch for a Gehanna gift card giveaway worth $599 to Gehanna businesses. This helps to encourage holiday shopping and dining in Gehanna. Last, the CVB submitted the Gehanna Holiday Lights Display, or submitted the Gehanna Holiday Lights Display for inclusion in the Ohio Tourism Holiday Lights Trail, and we were chosen for that. So we'll be part of the select list of cities in Ohio that's being advertised by Tourism Ohio as a place with an incredible lights display. So I know there's also a lot of Parks and Rec people out there tonight as well, so thank you for all the hard work that you guys do on that, because our lights display is incredible. Every year when I post a picture, everybody's always asking me where this is and are very excited about seeing that. So that's all for me.
Thank you, Ms. Padova. School Board, Councilwoman Jones?
Thank you. So wanted to highlight the November 6 Board Workshop Meeting. There was a policies discussion, and the district shared updates to several policies, but particularly some that have been in the news, like the cellphone ban that will take place in January, so it'll come into reality, and enforcement in January in the schools. Updates to policies around attendance-based retention and religious release time were shared as well. So it was a super informative meeting, and just encourage colleagues in the community to take a look at that. Upcoming board meeting, so tomorrow, November 18, 6:30 at Clark Hall, is a finance and facilities meeting, and then regular board meeting this Thursday, November 20, 6:30 at Clark Hall as well. As part of my role as liaison, I'm also a member of Dr. Deagle's communication sort of ambassador team, and one of the conversations that we've had recently, I think there's been some question about safety in the new high school with it being glass and whatnot. And so there's a host of information and a list of all of the safety enhancements, but just a couple that I wanted to highlight for colleagues in the community is that the new building will have electronic monitoring, so SROs have the ability to kind of monitor and see the whole school at the whole time, at all times, that they don't have today. Obviously, all classes are now in one building, so we don't have students, you know, running across traffic for lunch in classes. And then just the design overall. The glass in the building is supposed to enhance safety, not take down on privacy of students and teachers, but really is all about just making sure that there's visibility where the building is needed. And so if you want to see and learn more about safety and everything going into the new high school, just a reminder that January 10 is the ribbon cutting and tour of both the old and new building. So save the date. More information to come on specific times.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jones.
Thank you.
Official reports, Mayor Jadwin.
Thank you very much. First of all, I'm very proud to share that late yesterday, it was yesterday, Chief Spence, Safety Director Becker, Deputy Chief Lawless, Stacy Morris, our Compliance and Program Administrator, and I returned from Jacksonville, Florida with the division's inaugural advanced CALIA accreditation, which was given without conditions. That's actually a rarity for agencies. On Friday, we appeared in a hearing before a panel of four CALIA commissioners to answer questions that were derived from a previous week-long virtual assessment that was done earlier this year, as well as from a three-day onsite inspection and inspection that was held back in August. You might remember, we talked about that at the time it happened. Similar panel hearings were held for multiple agencies simultaneously on Friday and Saturday. Those were broken down by United States agencies as well as international agencies. Prior to our panel questioning, I had the opportunity to watch some of the other agencies' interactions with the panel, and I experienced firsthand just how intense, how stressful, and how detailed that process is. The commissioners were prepared, they were hyper-focused, and they had questions specific to each agency that appeared before them. Other agencies that were questioned prior to the time we were, we were before the panel, were issued several remedial mandates covering a range of issues from use-of-force reporting to evidence handling, training, vehicle pursuits, and more. Any of those agencies that received the remedial mandates are required now to prepare written action plans demonstrating those deficiencies, that those deficiencies were remediated before they can return, or before they return to the next CALIA conference next year, if they want to continue their pursuit of accreditation or to maintain their accreditation. And I'm extremely proud to say that no such conditions were issued to our division. It was quite the love fest between the panel and our team sitting there, but I believe that truly demonstrates the commitment, the dedication, and the professionalism of every one of our division members. Subsequently, the next day on Saturday night, the full commission of 21 voted to award our first-time advanced accreditation, which was, I think, quite a proud moment for all of us. We've now obtained the internationally recognized gold standard of excellence in policing, and we enter a four-year cycle of re-accreditation with annual reviews. This weekend represents the culmination of three years' worth of work in the formal accreditation process, but I believe honestly the legwork began well before that. The achievement is a testament to our division's core values in action: professionalism, respect, commitment, and integrity, and to having an agency-wide focus on achieving the division's mission to serve and to protect, which is emblazoned on the side of all of our vehicles. I know that I speak for Chief Spence and Director Becker, as well as DC over there, Deputy Chief Lawless, when I say that it was a privilege to represent the city and an honor to champion the work that our officers and our division staff do each and every day, and I'm really thrilled that so many of them were here tonight. On their behalf, I extend my sincere gratitude and thanks to each and every one of our division members, as well as a heartfelt thanks to the members of our IT, HR, court, and finance departments, as well as senior directors Volmer and Schultz, all of whom were instrumental in addressing aspects of the broader city processes that are part of the CALIA accreditation process as they impact division operations. Finally, I would be remiss if I did not expressly recognize the work and my gratitude for Stacy Morris back there. Stacy, put your hand up there. Again, our Compliance and Program Administrator, as well as Deputy Chief Lawless, for their hard work and expertise that navigated us through the CALIA process over the last three years. Deputy Chief for bringing his expertise, his knowledge in guiding us through this process, and the attention to detail provided by Stacy Morris. I don't know if you're aware, but there are hundreds upon hundreds of documents and policies that need to be created and monitored, followed by then gathering the proof that we are complying with every one of those documents and policies. That's the really hard work, as we talked about at length on Saturday. It's not so much developing the policies, it's finding the proof that we are complying with that, because not everything is visible. A lot of that is kind of the invaluable and tangent things that are done, and it takes a yeoman's job, and I hate to tell her, but I think the work's just beginning. It was three years' work of work with a wonderful award that we walked away with Saturday night, but she's already, I think, almost finished with the process for 2025 as we near the year end. So Stacy, kudos to you. DC, kudos to you as well. Director Becker, thank you for your guidance, your knowledge, and your counsel as well. You brought a lot of expertise with you, and you really helped to bring it all together in these last few years that you have been with us, and we have really appreciated your leadership. And of course, last but not least, to Chief Spence for setting the vision and the goal to ensure that we are delivering the gold standard in best policing practices. I can't look at you, I'm gonna cry. To the citizens of Gehanna, I know how much this project and this goal has meant to you, and I've been honored to be a part of that process, walking hand in hand with you, and to be able to be there, to be up on that stage and receive that award with this team was truly an honor, and I look forward to what this means for our citizens and our community. Again, the work's just begun, but we've set the bar, I believe, for many of the agencies. There were a lot of comments congratulating our agency for seeking advanced certification out of the gate, and to do so with no conditions was a huge achievement. So well done, Gehanna Division of Police, and I look forward to seeing what we're gonna do next. Next, I'd like to, even though I know I had comments at the outset of the presentation of the development agreement, as the head of the administration, I'd like to thank you, council, for taking this important and forward-looking step into our community with your vote on the Creekside Development Agreement this evening. I remember sitting in my offices years, my office years ago, talking with an economic development consultant, you might remember Jennifer Sixx, and asking, how could we ensure that we had the development that we, our community, wanted to see down in that area? And she looked at me and said, well, Mayor, you need a strategy, and you need to control the land. And that's what we did. And I recognize this was not an easy decision, and I appreciated each and every one of your comments tonight. Each one of you, I thought, really summarized the difficulty of this decision. It was not an easy one for you, it was not an easy one for me or for our staff as we worked on this project. And I would be remiss if I did not identify Director, former Director Nate Strum, as well as former Director Shannon Hammons, who all had a hand in this as well through the years. Change is scary, it's also inevitable. Either we move forward with this project and we take steps to make Creekside more vibrant as our residents and community members have told us they want to see, or we do nothing and Creekside continues to decline. So either way, change is coming, and I applaud you and thank you for your partnership. I do truly believe this project is a necessary step forward for our downtown, for our businesses, and for our community long term. But to piggyback on something that Councilwoman Weaver said, tonight's vote is not the end of the process, but it really is essentially the beginning. Tonight, you authorized the development agreement. For everybody who's maybe watching at home or tuning in later, this opens the door now to the next phase of work. The immediate next phase will be a six-month due diligence period by the developer to look at the property and determine whether or not they can indeed build what they're saying that they want to build in terms of the land, et cetera. Assuming that happens, then we will move through the planning process, which will involve all of those evaluations of things like infrastructure and traffic, and the aesthetics of the building, and all of those things that will need to be evaluated by the planning department, the building department, engineering, et cetera, public safety, parks and recreation from a landscaping standpoint. All of those things will be developed, and through that process is multiple opportunities for community input. So tonight is not the end, it is really the beginning, and we look forward to working hand in hand with our community. I'd like to, to that point, thank the many residents and business owners who attended a meeting or took the time to watch online, who provided feedback, sent a question, also stopped in the grocery store, or even got a call out in the airport with somebody yelling about the project. We also, Friday, hosted the Columbus Business First Breakfast again with 250 registrants, and I can begin to tell you the number of people from throughout central Ohio who have been watching this project, who approached myself, Director Gocke, Director Schultz, and Volmer, who were there, and talked about what a wonderful project they thought this was for our community and exactly what Gehanna needed. So this project is, means something not just to our community, but to folks around the central Ohio region. I also want to recognize that many in our community hold strong and varied opinions about how Gehanna should grow, and that engagement reflects how deeply people care about Gehanna and care about this city. And I, like all of you, value those perspectives, and those perspectives will continue to shape how we move forward. So we continue to look, we look forward to continuing that engagement with our community as this project moves forward. But tonight, council, your decision represents, I believe, a thoughtful step toward a more vibrant, connected, and economically strong downtown. I'm grateful for your partnership and for your willingness to work through this process with us, and with care, with transparency, and a focus on Gehanna's long-term future. Just a couple things. I know you mentioned CIC meetings being open to the public. Those minutes are also available at gehannacic.com. Every meeting minute is posted there. The only ones not are for October of this year, because they'll be approved tomorrow morning, and as soon as those are approved, those will be added as well. And then you can also, let me just remind folks, creeksidereimagined.com with information on the project, links to all prior meetings, et cetera. And then last but not least, I just want to shout out to the, thanks to the Gehanna Veterans Committee for, again, hosting another wonderful tribute to our veterans on Veterans Day at the Memorial Park. The air was cold, but the hearts were warm, as we honored all of our veterans for their courageous service, their steadfast dedication, and their unwavering commitment to protecting our nation. And for more events coming up, don't forget to check our calendar on gehanna.gov. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. City Attorney Tamara Harrison?
Yes, thank you. Previously, I had been keeping you all apprised of the tag Lea litigation, which was the trip and fall in Academy Park. I am pleased to report that the motion for summary judgment was granted in favor of the city, and so that case is now closed on the grounds of recreational and political immunity. I will keep you apprised if there's any appeal stemming from that, but as of now, the case is closed. Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney Tamara Harrison. All right. Section and council comment, Mrs. McGregor.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McGregor. Mrs. Jones?
Nothing for me, other than my September-October constituent newsletter is attached to the agenda for folks to just stay on top of what we did and accomplished the past couple months. That is all.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones. Mrs. Padova?
Thank you. Congratulations to Chief Spence and the whole team and everyone who has worked on the CALIA accreditation. I know this has been a really long process, so thank you for all the hard work that has gone into that. Again, can't believe it's, we're talking about Christmas, but save the date for the annual Ugly Sweater Party at Edison. It will be on December 10, from 4:30 to 6:30. We will have an ugly sweater showdown with prizes for the winners and a 50/50 raffle to support GRIN. So thank you to Edison, Corey Wyvinsinger, Lori Kappas, and Teresa Imp for helping pull this together. It's always a good time for a great cause and helps to support our food pantry here. As this is the last meeting before Black Friday and all of the many cyber sales, want to remind people about Small Business Saturday. It does fall on the Saturday, the OSU plays that team up north, so it does get a bit overshadowed here in Ohio. But I do encourage everyone to try to support local businesses here in Gehanna or across central Ohio in any way that you can. So I would love it if everyone shopped all of their holiday gifts locally. But if you can't do that, simply telling your friend about your favorite local store, following them on social media, liking their posts, commenting, sharing, all of those little things go a long way for our small business community. And last but not least, I need to wish one of our regular streamers a very happy birthday. My father-in-law never misses a meeting, and certainly wouldn't be sitting here without him, so happy birthday done.
Thank you, Councilwoman Podova. Councilwoman Runner.
Kaylee, you always make it a little difficult to follow you, so I, I want to actually congratulate Michaela Fulham. It's really nice to see that we have additional staff, and I'm sure her family is definitely very proud of her. Chief Spence, my hat is off to you, sir. Very well done. I remember long ago you started talking to me about the Kalia, and I was like, "What are you freaking talking about?" And then learned that it's the international gold standard for police work. And it's been an incredible journey for you and for the city of Gehanna. And so thank you deeply for that. Director Becker and DCA, we have two of them who are the DC Deputy Chiefs, and thank you, gentlemen, for all your work. And Mayor, I think you actually summarized it, you well, is that it's not just the unit and the leadership that actually, for the Police Department, but for the city as a whole, and all the administration staff and support for that. So thank you. And then thank you to the staff for your support and dedication to the Creekside Development Agreement. I know that I've actually called Jeff several times for extra information, and you were able to put that together very quickly, sir, and I really appreciate that. And thank you to all the staff. I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Schnitzer.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm gonna sound a bit repetitive. Congratulations to the Gehanna Division of Police on the Kalia accreditation. Chief, I know you've worked very, very hard, as well as the rest of your staff on this. For me, it is not a surprise, not because it's easy, actually quite the contrary. We know how thorough and, and high these standards are, but because you guys, we talked about this accreditation being the gold standard. I would say the Gehanna Division of Police is the gold standard in professional law enforcement, not just in the region, but maybe even nationwide. It's a, it's a true pillar of this community from the standpoint of, it's one of the things that makes Gehanna great. I hear it very often out in the community. In fact, just down the street from me, we have new neighbors, and they moved probably in late summer. And when they, when I asked them, "What drew you to Gehanna?", they said they perceived it as being safer than, than another suburban community in central Ohio. And I think I relayed that to you, Chief. I think that's the highest endorsement that you can get. People are literally moving here because it's safer in their minds than, than other communities as well. I also want to welcome aboard Ms. Fulham. The chief was talking in his comments about, in some other agencies, if you pick up the phone, you may get an answering machine. I shared this experience of mine back during the issue 12 days, when I was working downtown. Was working late one night, was parked in a parking garage attached to the office, came out, opened the back door to put my belongings in the backseat, and a bunch of glass fell on the running boards, and I look up, and some kind soul had smashed out the back window and climbed in and rummaged through some of my belongings. I called the agency that was in that jurisdiction and got routed to a voicemail for non-emergency call after hours. Quickly hung up, I called Gehanna Non-Emergency Line, despite not being in Gehanna, told them the situation, and they said, "Hold on one second." They patched me through to a live person at that agency, who then gave me instructions on, on how to proceed. That's the level of service that you get here in this community from the Gehanna Division of Police and from our dispatcher's room. So it's a very high standard, and she's joining a great team, and we're glad to have her aboard. That's all.
Thank you, Councilman Schnitzer. Vice President Weaver.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, thank you to everyone for joining us this evening, whether here or streaming. Appreciate everybody who has offered their opinions over the last several months. Thank you to our hearing of visitors, speakers this evening as well. Want to add my words of congratulations to Ms. Fulham, and welcome her to the city as Chief and the entire division, congratulations to all of you. For those unaware, Chief sent a lovely email this, this afternoon, sharing the wonderful news, but she gave the credit to the entire division, and I am sure that is absolutely true, but much of that credit also rests with you and Director Becker and your leadership team, Deputy Chief, both Deputy Chiefs, excuse me. So thank you all, and thanks for all that you do every day to keep us safe. I also want to give my thanks and gratitude to the Gehanna Veterans Committee for a lovely ceremony on Veterans Day. Always a very moving, moving opportunity to honor our veterans. So it was nice to see the community turn out on what really was a cold day. So thank you all very much, and, and I believe that'll be it for me this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. I'll keep it very concise. I just want to say ditto to a lot of what my colleagues have said, and tonight brings me to the, one of my favorite quotes, that you have to build community to move community. And we've heard so much in this room just tonight about how we are building community and how there are opportunities for everyone in our community to be engaged. An engaged community is a strong community, it's a safe community, it's a forward-moving community. And so I would just remind everyone that as we continue to engage and bring people in and with us, that just makes us go further and, and farther. So thank you. With that, we'll adjourn this evening's regular council meeting, and we will reconvene Finance momentarily. Thank you.
I need to run to the restroom.
Yes, I need to stand up and use the restroom as well.
Want to go ahead and call to order our Finance Committee meeting for Monday, November We, tonight, we're talking about our budget and its parks, Recreation, and Department of Planning, and we have a few other overview questions. Parks, oh, Miranda, did you want to go first?
Yes, please.
Please.
Good evening, everyone. So this evening, we'll, it's okay with you all, we'll start with the Department of Planning. And then there was one question submitted for the Department of Planning, so Director Blackford will give his priorities and answer his question. And then Director Farrell is here on behalf of Parks and Recreation and some of her leadership team as well, to go over their priorities, and then the Parks and Recreation questions. And then Director Bury has made it back here to her favorite place to answer the outstanding questions for the Department of Finance.
Thank you, Director Volmer. I would like to make one clarification. It's not just Joanne's favorite place, but this is also my favorite place as well. That's unrelated to the department's priorities, budget requests. So this is our Department of Planning's, three of our top priorities for 2026. First one on your screen here, this is our zoning code updates that we do periodically. It's imperative that our long-range vision documents, such as the land use plan and our newly adopted strategic plan, they're consistent with our rules and regulations, our laws, which is our code. So that's why, you know, when issues arise, we always are analyzing our consistency of our zoning code with those documents. So that, again, is a priority for 2026. And again, it's really to make sure, not that these documents match, it's not like if one says 16 feet and the other says 17 feet, that's an issue, because they're very different documents with very different objectives and priorities. So again, a land use plan and a strategic plan, those are not laws like our codes, those are aspirational documents in that. And so if an aspirational document is talking about a vision, a desired state for an area, let's say the city has land use plan, or the strategic plan talk about, let's say, the Creekside area. And the vision for the Creekside area, obviously, as we talked about today, is a, a mixed-use, high-intensity area, pedestrian-friendly. But if our zoning code is still from 1958, which talks about agrarian types of uses, large lot, residential agricultural uses, that's a conflict. That's when cities have, have issues. And it's something that actually is fairly prevalent in cities where these documents are in conflict with their rules, and that's a very, can cause a lot of issues, because again, these documents are where our community is looking for to anticipate what our vision and where to grow. So again, you know, making sure our zoning code is consistent with the vision documents. Next up on your screen, let's create online mapping tools. Very simply here, this is about creating awareness within our community about future public hearing applications. That's something the Department of Planning gets a lot of calls. A lot of times, people will see maybe activity on the site, they'll see a survey crew, and they, they'll call, or they'll talk to their neighbors, their neighbors say, "I heard something", or the queen mother of them all, they hear, read something on the interwebs about something coming. So a lot of this is to get out in front of some of that misinformation. It's a lot easier to get information out there rather than trying to correct a record when things get out there. So when applications get submitted, those are, are public records. So a lot of communities, they have a mapping tool where it links where these projects are going to be located, you can track along, look at hearing dates, things of that nature. Final one up here, this is about our land entitlement process. So a great meeting to kind of bring this up. Several folks talked about Creekside and sort of that long-term vision, and how young we all were when, when that vision was being contemplated and that. And here we are, many years later, decades later, and there's still parcels that haven't been developed. So when we talk a lot in this facility, in this room here, we talk a lot about plans and what those visions are, we talk a lot about codes, we talk a little bit less about process. And process is how we get from our vision into that reality and that. So I know there's a lot of conversations about Creekside, a lot of acknowledgement about that project having to go through a staff review and such. And so that staff review gets a lot more complicated than what we've done so far, and there's more moving parts. So again, we focus a lot on some of the outward-facing initiatives, but an inward-facing initiative is really that permitting process. How do we get better at it? And so we don't talk a lot about process, but did talk about this. I remember some of those faces back in June when I was up for you, talking about what our priorities for our department was. And there was a particular slide up there that talked about, it had three images on there. It talked about inputs, outputs, and in the middle there is, is process. And we talked about continuously improving that process. So what we were going to do, what we'd like to do here, is look at our process, do a deep dive, very similar, it's not related to, say, Kaizen or Lean or Six Sigma Project, but it's sort of in that spirit where we want to look at our process, see what's working well, what isn't working well, where we can improve efficiencies and such. So again, it's about improving efficiency, always continuously improving. We don't know exactly what the scope of work is going to be, but there are certain things that we know that are paramount for initiative like this to be successful. This is going to be very heavily intensive for staff. This is a lot of conversations with staff, with our consultant, getting a knowledge of what our experiences have been, what works, what doesn't work, looking at where some, some of these touchpoints are occurring. This is well beyond just the Department of Planning, this is going to encompass other departments as well, because the land entitlement process, like the mayor was just talking about, Parks is looking at landscaping, Engineering is looking at utilities, easements, things of that nature, involves a lot of different departments. So it's getting, maybe taking a, a fresh look at what each department's roles are, when they're touched. they're touching these things, is there a possibility of consolidating? And again, it's all about improving efficiencies. Talking with some of these vendors, we know that they're going to be looking at certain things, you know, are going to be interviews, they're looking at obstacles. Some of the obstacles that they've talked about directly impacts what's on your screen and some of the questions, which is the, the budget. Just talking with some of the vendors that do this kind of work, some of the common issues they find that does relate to dollars is really related to staffing shortages and technology needs. And that's something that we're not anticipating additional dollars being necessary for, because we have, we anticipate being adequately staffed, and as you know, we've gone through permitting software initiatives here. So we're not anticipating there to be future costs, or significant future costs with this initiative. Very good news to report, and that's when this was being written, we weren't sure if this was going to be a 2026 initiative, 2025, where are the dollars going to come from, what are the costs? And pleasantly surprised is that the cost is a little bit less than we anticipated. It's still a costly project, it's very similar to doing a plan, again, deep dive, a lot of staff involvement, a lot of involvement from a third-party consultant, and that, but we anticipate that to be about, instead of a six-figure request, it's about a $60,000 to $75,000 dollar request. And between the various departments that are involved, we actually have dollars in place that we do not need to request additional dollars for 2026. And because we're not anticipating there to be the types of recommendations that would involve, again, you know, onboarding additional staff or significant new resources like technology software, things of that nature, we're not anticipating this to result in future costs down the road. So I think one of the questions is, you know, what, what is this going to look like as far as the end results, you know, what could we expect? And I think ultimately, you know, a lot of it is, is reduce permitting time. Again, it's not, it's about making sure that we're as efficient and effective as possible. And that's good for, again, for internal and external customers. And that, one of the major things that permitting does and what's important, we're in here talking about Creekside and economic development and, and all the different facets that are important to make a project successful, predictability of permitting is, is the most important thing, or the thing that affects economic development within your jurisdiction, more than anything else that you all have somewhat control over. Most of those factors aren't within your control. So of all the factors that those large businesses are looking for, you know, that everyone's courting, the more options they have, the more important it is predictably, predictability of permitting. So again, this is extremely important in staff's eyes, so again, predictability leads to a better, more predictable process, quicker process. And ultimately, my expectations are similar to the zoning code process, where in order, in my opinion, I would anticipate this to be something that would be copied by other jurisdictions. That's what I say, I think success looks like, you know, increased efficiencies, predictability, and I would anticipate that this is something that other communities are going to try to replicate. We've seen that with our zoning code and some of the other initiatives that the city has done, and I would anticipate for this one as well. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Director, thank you very much.
Appreciate all your time, thank you.
Okay. Good evening and thank you. One thing before I get started with the outlined priorities is the consideration that we are in the third year of implementation of the Parks Master Plan. So the priorities that are outlined here are directly in line with that plan, and there's also outcomes that are defined within our Gehani's Strategic Plan that are, that fall in line. One, the first is to continue to enhance the elevated standards of care throughout the park system. This is including investing and updating our existing facilities and assets. This is everything from including and elevating the aesthetics of multerings around trees to updating restroom facilities, but also customer service training for our seasonal staff. So it's the individual as an asset as well. One thing I want to make note of, there is a group of people behind me, and I think some virtually as well, and some not represented, that are a true representation of the expectation of the standard of care, and they do an incredible job of expressing what those expectations are, just in the way that they interact with themselves and coworkers, but also with the public as well. So that is one thing that is, exudes throughout the, the city and department, and something that we, we do thrive ourselves on. Continuing with, we are and have the ability to transition the Senior Center operation to 825 Tech Center. We are incredibly excited and, and really entering a, a new era for this operation. It's more than just a physical move to this location, it will require a significant amount of operation policy and an enhanced customer service. We do expect an anticipated growth of membership with this new facility. We, we have the opportunity to, to live in and program. With that, it's a, it's a good segue into continuing to maximize program options to increase the participation throughout the city. Our staff do an incredible job of creating opportunities to gather, to, to visit parks, trails and facilities. Since we do have the ability to increase and expand those indoor spaces through the Exploration Center as well as 825, we have new opportunities to build that year-round programming, which is something that has been deficient for quite some years. Improving wayfinding and signage along the Big Walnut Trail, we know that the trail system is something that is near and dear. Not only do our residents use it, but they also want to increase its functionality and also expand that trail system. Through the efforts of our program, excuse me, Project Manager Catherine Eichel, we were able to secure an ODOT Transportation Alternatives Program grant, and this is specifically to improve the wayfinding of the Big Walnut Trail system. It'll help users navigate the system and ultimately just help improve the safety and efficiency of that site. Not specifically noted here, but I think is worthwhile. Two also bullet is that the maintenance of the trail system as it exists today is also a priority, as we continue to develop and design additional trail mileage throughout the system. Increasing or improving the function of our recreation software is also a priority. We have an existing software that we use today, it does everything from program registrations, facility reservations, booking teen times, et cetera. It is a, it is a complex system, however, the user experience is not to the standards of what we would like to see. So with the inclusion of a new module for mobile improvements, but also an expanded training course for our staff to continue to develop and simplify the process, it will improve the, the user's experience, but also guide the confidence of our staff in order to build the, the criteria for that system. We also utilize OpenGov for our permitting, this is anything from a rotary stage permit or a 5K permit. Those were transitioned to OpenGov in 2025. The special event permit, if you have ever had the opportunity to complete one, is lengthy and could be cumbersome, maybe opportunity for significant human error. So that is being transitioned to OpenGov as well, which will not only help the consistency or continuity between internal departments, but also our partners who are directly impacted by those event policies. And continuing to improve and, and increase, the urban canopy is also a prior, continued priority for the department. Through the expertise of our forestry team, we understand that a vital way in order to improve and expand and protect the canopy is by way of street tree. The program was first funded in 2024, and we continue to place a focus on maintaining the current assets. But with the support of Mayor Jadwin and of course City Council, we've been able to progress through that plan much faster than what we had anticipated. A tree inventory was completed, or is in progress for 2025, and that plan will help us to balance the priorities of the continued care of our existing tree canopy, but also for those planned replacements. The replacement strategy is also in part based off of removals, so anytime that there's a removal, whether it's for care or for sidewalk, the removals are concentrated into those locations. Moving into 2026, we'll have an opportunity to expand the street tree plantings outside of just removals. So if you don't have a tree but want one, we'll have an opportunity to get trees in locations where, where people want them. Communication and education is also a priority. The more the individuals understand and know what the impacts are and why some are being removed, what the care is, is, is a priority for the team. The efforts of the forestry team have already been expansive, there have been improvements to the comprehensive landscape plan by including not only prohibited trees, but, but also preferred trees. There is a new forestry page, which is through the efforts of our marketing communications team and our forestry team, to have a hub or a specific location where frequent questions are asked. The landscape plan is located there, but it, it's, it just creates an awareness and a space for an important topic. Hopefully, you've also seen Forestry Fridays on social media, where our forestry team also gets an opportunity to give some specific details and really just have fun with the topic and just create different avenues in order to create that education, and we'll continue to do that throughout 2026. Don't also want to lose focus that the canopy is not only just street trees, that this team also manages and cares for, the over 800 acres of parkland that we have, and the team successfully plants over at least 100 park trees annually. That is it for the priorities, I'm happy to jump right into questions. So we covered street tree, kind of mended that conversation in together. I can give you some overarching totals of where we are from the plan from 2025. So in 2025, there were 169 removals, and these removals were based off of either prohibited trees, invasive species, hazard removals. Happy to express that 340 tree trees will be planted by the end of this year. So again, the goal of planting more than removed. We do have a canopy that over many years, that just the, the lack of standard of care or the expressed need of the care has presented a, I guess, a circumstance where we have to put the care into what we have now. But again, because of your support, we can continue to plant where those removals are taking place, to put the right tree in the right location. The next question around pickleball facilities, we do not have any, any pickleball facilities outlined in our capital improvement plan, that we do utilize the Parks Master Plan in order to prioritize those improvements. And also something to consider is that while it may seemingly be simple to place pickleball courts, there are a significant amount of considerations that need to be made. Again, acoustics is something that we've understood as a, as a division or just nationwide, that there have been some facilities that have either transitioned from tennis to pickleball, have then been transitioned back, or ultimately closed because of the acoustic impact and the negative result of those surrounding them. So always something that we consistently evaluate, but we do not have any current facilities planned for our capital improvement plan. The cost recovery question, so the, the cost recovery strategy, the baseline of that strategy is outlined in the department's pricing policy. This is something that is reviewed annually by the Parks, Parks and Recreation Board. Any changes are then brought to council for recommendation for adoption. And the tiers are based off of community impact. So for example, we do not charge you to attend a park to utilize the playground that has a complete subsidy, we do, that's something that is completely covered, we don't have a, a model for that recovery. But alternatively, golf is more individualized focused, we do have a strategy in order to recoup those dollars. So staff are able to utilize those percentages based off of that model to determine what the charges for services are, so that gives you the ability to see if you're going to fall in line with the cost recovery model. I will note that every section, every revenue presenting service is within line of their cost recovery target. When you look at the full department, it's noteworthy to, to, to show that the full department includes the park operation, which the only charge for service for the park operation is rentals of outdoor shelters. So there is a, a large displacement of what that looks like when you're including the park operation into that recovery model. But the team does a great job of making sure that those expenses are in line with how we are adopting through our cost recovery model. There's a question around what indoor program spaces would become available in 2026. This is to reiterate that the 825 Tech Center Drive will become available, as well as the Exploration Center, that is under construction as of now. We expect to enter the facility in fall of 2026. For expanded programming, we have, again, the ability, not only just with the indoor program sites, but also the creativity of our teams and creating additional partnership opportunities, whether it's with schools or special interest groups. We are ultimately a feeder program for individuals to try new experiences at a reasonable price. An example would be if you, you know, you know, want to try soccer recreationally prior to investing into a travel team, we are able to present those types of activities at a, at a low, low cost, close to your, close to your home. So we'll continue to expand that programming through multi-generation, based off of not only increased need of adult health and wellness, but also other after-school programming as outlined in our Parks Master Plan. And then from the department, increase time over time, Issue 12 identified a need for expanded services through the Parks and Recreation Department. So with those services, the appropriate staffing model was necessary in order to be able to produce the expected outcomes of those services. Along with that, we've transitioned part-time maintenance workers to full-time. That was necessary, again, to, to refer back to the standard of care that is the expectation. We also had the availability to appropriately staff the recreation team. And noteworthy within these expenditures is that in, prior to Issue 12, maintenance decisions were prohibited, were prioritized based off of safety. So any type of expanded or improvements were really sent to a halt just because of financial impact. So now we have an ability to not only do what we need to from a maintenance standpoint, but also increase that standard based off of the residents' needs. Happy to answer any other questions you have.
Yeah, I just had a, I guess, curiosity on pickleball and the acoustics. So are you saying pickleball is like louder than tennis?
So interestingly enough, yes. Because of the type of ball that's used and the paddle that's used, it creates a large decibel, and to the, to the end that it has reached, we'll say national news, throughout the industry, it is something that is recognizable.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Director, very much for the presentation. Quick follow-up on the cost recovery model. So, page 88 of the Budget Book, so I understand the, the difference between, you know, playground structures and, you know, golf, and as someone who is a lifeguard and managed a pool for many years, I understand that pools are, I view them as a service, right, more so than anything, because it's tough to make money on a pool. So I, I get it. I'm trying to understand what goes, how you came up with this, the slide, for lack of a better word, on page 88, the image of the, how that breaks down, is that an average of the different cost recovery, different, from the different programming, or what is going into that number?
So what you're looking at is full department expenditures to revenue, and that's revenue for charges for services, not any type of income revenue.
Got it.
So that's, that's why, and again, that goes back to, that's including the park operation, so if you were to pull out- So if you were to pull out each section of the division, for example, for example, golf, golf is one of the services that does maximize the recovery. They are at 105% recovery. So they are, again, within their model, the, the range is 90 to 125%. So if you pull out golf specifically, they're in range. But when you collapse all of the expenditures for Parks Division as well as Recreation Division, that puts you into, it sways you to a different percentage just based off of the amount of expenditures to charges for services.
Yes. So that, that's what I was looking for. And so is this number on page 88, is that tracking where you want it to be?
It is in line with what we expect. And again, one thing that's noteworthy is because we've had to manage and maximize our seasonal salaries in order to be competitive, we understand that we are going to be level for quite some time, and that's expected.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Ms. Bedova.
Thank you. I, so the indoor programming space, I think, I don't know if I'm, I'm reading this wrong, but on 80, page 86, the staffing request is transition part-time recreation coordinator one to full-time coordinator two, aquatics adult. And as I read that out loud, I think I answered my own question, because is this, would this be like aquatics in the summer and then senior center when the pool is not?
Not just senior center. So one thing that we want to make notice, as outlined through feedback from the Parks Master Plan, is we're missing a designation that, that there's a 55 and over, but there's a population that we're not serving well. So when you're looking at that 18 to really even 75, 80, that, that's hard to put a range to. I shouldn't, I shouldn't quantify that. But there's a, there's a designation or a range of individuals that we're not serving well. So this individual, this transition will help to put priority and focus into that designation that we are not serving.
Okay. Thank you. I, as I was reading that, I realized that I was looking at it as just aquatics and ignoring the adult piece and wondering what indoor aquatic spaces were becoming available. So that was my confusion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marissa.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much, Director Farrell. I guess just first a compliment on the focus on the street tree program and the tree canopy as a whole. I think that aligns very strongly with, I think, the, the, the understanding of how important that is for so many reasons for our residents across the day. So thank you so much for recognizing that. And I also just, I shared, I'll just share a quick anecdote about how mindful and I think caretaking and professional the street tree program has shown itself to be. So in a court in my, a cul-de-sac in my neighborhood, there, it was perhaps one of the worst buckled sidewalks, like lifted literal six inches to eight inches panels between them. And the court was lined with about eight or nine street trees, and you were able to identify, I think, only three or four of those that could not be saved. And so it was able to preserve these mature trees in this court that gave the, the quality of life while addressing these critical structural issues. So I just am very grateful for the thoughtfulness that's going into that program and, and that it's a priority going forward.
Well, obviously, the, the Arbor Team, and again, with Zach Guthrie as the Parks Manager, as well as Julie Pruderry, they understand and have put effort not only into the evaluation and planning of that, of that, of that program, but also into the staff. So we have trained tree risk assessment qualified staff that have the ability to make the determination of tree care without outsourcing it. So we have a truly experienced staff to make those decisions.
Yeah, and I think that just really reflects, that's going to just reflect back in the quality of resident life. So thank you. I did have one other question about prioritization. We've talked about camps before, summer camps, winter, winter break camp, and some other youth camp programming. It, it serves so many purposes, and I just want to, again, speak to this, that it, there continues to be a childcare issue regionally and a childcare cost burdening issue regionally, of course, and the importance of these camps in, in how they are able to offer very affordable child, summer childcare, while also layering in all the other benefits of summer camp and what that means, remains, I think, to be really a critical offering and programming from the department. So I would just encourage you to continue recognizing the importance of that program and the value that that brings to, to the entire, I can, I've used this phrase already once tonight, the entire economic ecosystem of our region, of our community. So thank you so much for, for your focus on that. And if you want to, if you want to speak a little bit about anything that you're adding or doing differently next year, I'm happy to hear it as well.
Most certainly. And, and, you know, through the, the efforts, again, Brian Gil, Superintendent, just really evaluating what we're able to do. Prior to 2023, our staffing models truly limited us on what we were able to do. We do have ACA accredited camps, which require a certain ratio for child, child to caretaker, so that, that we do have an expectation and a responsibility in order to provide the best level of care. But because of the effort and the input of just the culture of that division, but then also the, the standard of that program, staff are returning, campers are returning, which is a great problem to have, but the demand is still there. So continuing to look at other abilities to expand the locations of what offerings we have is a consideration and, and truly, again, having indoor space will present a different alternative option for, for the department. And then also, again, understanding that after care, after school care is also something that we are not serving. So creating those partnerships with our local partners and, and school district will present other opportunities for that childcare option. So understand, and we are seeing the demand for those programs.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Right, Director. Thank you. Back to you, Miranda.
Okay, so I'll answer the general questions here. So the first one, issue fund, or issue $12, and is any of that in the general fund? No, that would be in non-compliance with our income tax code. Next is page 125, the Enterprise Capital Improvement Plan. So when the official capital improvement plan document was created, it also includes proprietary funds. So this is directing readers back to that official capital improvement plan and also the capital improvement section, which lists those projects from that plan that are going to be funded. For the special revenue funds, those are kind of stagnant. A lot of those are very old and basically only have unreserved fund balance left. They're not generating any new revenue. So if there's no revenue or income coming in, you can't really program anything. However, we do look at those annually when we come to the table for budget discussions. And a lot of times, there's some legality questions too, because those codes are very old. And some of it is also grant funding. Once the grant is exhausted, that fund no longer has any revenue resources, so there's no programming to be involved. So the way in which we look at how resources are going to be used, we always look at these restricted resources first. Then we look at, are there any committed or assigned dollars? And then we look at unassigned, which is basically the general fund. And so specifically with the street tree program that is currently coming out of the general fund, if you'll notice, that street tree fund itself is based on some permitting codes, and it has not generated any revenue except for the one or two deposits. So it's kind of hard to create programming around no resources. Oh, and then on, those are the org descriptions that I provided earlier. And I, I thought I had that in there to add those for this year, so we'll make sure that in next year's budget document, that those org descriptions are listed in there.
Any questions or comments? I don't have any either.
That's all we have for this evening. If there are no other questions, next week are questions on public service and the Department of Engineering.
Okay. Per normal, I ask my colleagues to send me everything by your questions on next Monday evening, subject by Thursday, Thursday night is fine.
Mayor?
Just, just a point. I'd like to actually thank the members of our Parks and Recreation Team who are here this evening. I don't know if you've noticed, but they are barely staying awake because they start very early in the morning, and for them to be still sitting here at 9:20 tonight is a, is a big ask of them. But they did it because they wanted to be here to support the department and, and be able to, to support the Director. I just want to, I was watching your faces. Thank you for being here, all of you, this evening. Appreciate all that you do.
Thank you. That concludes our finance committee. Thank you.